At this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Ms. Bayler, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Susan Emery and then we'll have the flag salute led to us by Chris Beard.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, right hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a closed session item. It has to do with a lawsuit. We have nothing to report. It's my understanding we have some presentations this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the first presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize a devoted group of individuals who have played a significant role in upholding the annual Strawberry Festival's reputation as a signature event in this community. Would President Jerry Newkirk from the 2014 Strawberry Festival Association please come forward? Also, will the association members joining us tonight please stand to be recognized? For the past fifty-six years, community leaders have volunteered hundreds of hours planning and coordinating the Strawberry Festival, which celebrates the agricultural history of the city, highlighting the role of the strawberry in that tradition. We're excited to report that this year was the fourth most successful festival in its history. An estimated two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people attended this year's festival, with many nonprofit groups benefiting from the sales of food and game boots. This year's theme was honoring our exceptional educators, and ten outstanding educators from the Garden Grove School District were celebrated. The Strawberry Festival also held their annual Special Kids Day, where the festival was open a day early to two thousand mentally and physically challenged children for free rides, food, ice cream, stuffed animals, and entertainment. The nonprofit Strawberry Festival Association has raised over six million dollars for local charities since its formation in nineteen fifty-eight. From their profits this year, the association pledges to donate between one-hundred to one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to the Garden Grove community. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Strawberry Festival Association with a gift of appreciation and recognition for their tireless efforts in organizing the 2014 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. Congratulations.
Let's all of you come up here. We've got a picture. Wait a minute. What's wrong with you, sir? How about a box of cigars? Hoxworth?
Unfortunately, they didn't bring them here yet.
You know something? I'm going to let you have these. Spread them out, okay? Thank you very much.
Move on. One, two, and three. Let's do one more. One, two, and three.
Jerry, would you like to say a few words?
It's just been my honor to lead this dedicated group of professionals. They're all volunteers, no pay. They do it because they love giving back to the community, and like me, they share a vision of doing things that are beneficial to the community. So it's been my honor to lead them this year.
I believe it was the third most successful, right, guys? As far as the third most?
Yes.
Don't blame Susan.
As I understand it, we have another presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Fire Chief Dave Barlag to make this presentation.
Tonight, the city council would like to recognize a local man who recently came to the aid of a complete stranger suffering cardiac arrest. Would Adam Mackey please come forward? On May thirty-first, Adam Mackey and his children were shopping at Garden Grove's Costco when they noticed an elderly man laying on the floor with a small crowd around him. Adam turned to his kids and told them to stay while he was offering his help. Realizing that the man was unconscious, Adam rolls him around so he's face up and checks for a pulse. When he can't find one, he begins administering CPR, something he's never done before in a live person, though he was trained to do so years ago. Remembering the full extent of his training, Adam asked the Costco employee for their automatic external defibrillator. After several minutes of chest compressions and rescue breathing, paramedics arrive unseen and take over the patient's care. The victim was transported to a local hospital. When Adam was asked why CPR, or why he continued CPR for as long as he did, he answered, "If I would have given, it would have given the guy a chance to live, why wouldn't I try it?" Time was very important when a person is unconscious and not breathing. Permanent brain damage begins after only four minutes without oxygen, and death occurs as soon as four to six minutes later. Many heart attack patients die before they reach the hospital. The sooner a person gets medical care, the better chance they have of surviving. Oftentimes, bystanders are hesitant to assist strangers in their need because they don't know how to administer CPR. Adam's proper CPR and AED training, quick thinking, and selfless act to a complete stranger makes us a true example of a good Samaritan. Although Representative of Costco could not be here tonight, the mayor and council would also like to thank the business for carrying an automatic external defibrillator for public use. At this time, the city council would like to recognize Adam for his life-saving efforts and present him with a certificate and crystal emmanuel.
Little something for you. I'd like to turn around and have your picture taken. I think we'd like that other little blonde girl to come up here also.
Come on, Chloe. Come here.
Oh, yes.
Come here, Chloe. Come here. Come here. Come here.
One more. One, two, three.
Is that cute?
One more. One, two, and three.
Adam, if you'd like to say a few words? If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to.
You know, when, it's crazy how God works in serious ways, you know? I was just going to Costco to get some stuff for my business, and the next thing I know, we were coming back towards the front of the store, and this guy dropped, and I asked the Costco employee if he was breathing. He says he didn't think so, so I just went to work, you know? The union taught me how to, you know, gave me some CPR training because you have to be CPR trained in there. And, you know, my wife used to be a firefighter, and I just wanted to give the guy life if I could do it, you know? If nobody else was going to help him, I figured, you know, I better do something, and I got these kids out of the way. My daughter actually thought I was kissing another guy. Have a long kiss, honey. You know, I don't think I would change a breath. I just kind of instinct took over, and, you know, if there's any, they didn't know CPR, you know, the guy at Costco, and so, but they were going to get the AED at the time, and I just figured, you know, if I'm going to give this guy a chance to live, I better start now and do it now. And I don't know the outcome of it, but, you know what? I did my best, and that's all we can do.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce Fire Captain Tang Nguyen. He's going to explain a couple of programs that were in place that assisted Adam during this time that the fire department is promoting. One's the AED program, and the second, I think you've been aware of, a program called Pulse Point. Fire Captain Tang Nguyen.
Good evening. I'm just here to give everybody a brief overview of the Pulse Point application. We launched it back in April of this year, and Garden Grove is one of eight metro cities, and the first set of cities in Orange County that has embraced the Pulse Point application. And it encourages the public, like, people like Adam, that are willing to help people that are in trouble. And this is on your screen here, and as you can see up here, is a map of the Pulse Point application giving the notification. And only one person actually was notified, and so we're still growing it. We, as of this afternoon, we have approximately eight-hundred people that follow the Garden Grove Fire Department on the Pulse Point application. And so there was only one person in proximity. He was just on the other side of Euclid, just below the boulevard there. And it's designed to notify people that are willing to help. Like Adam said, you know, if he wasn't going to do anything, this guy was just going to definitely not stand a fighting chance. The American Heart states that almost a thousand people die each year, I mean, each day, and of sudden cardiac arrest. That's not anything else. And only a fraction of those folks actually get bystander CPR. And as the chief alluded to earlier, is that every minute that goes by, your chances of survival decrease. So that's what the Pulse Point application does. In addition to that, it just locates where you are, tells you where the cardiac arrest is. There is no liability that comes with it because HIPAA is covered under this situation. It's only public location. So in this case, it was Costco that the application notified the end user. And in addition to it, you know, our citizens have the ability to see all the different incidents that we respond to on a daily basis. So that's basically what the Pulse Point application does.
This picture is actually the call that Adam responded to, and he wasn't a Pulse Point app holder that I would know of, but a number of pieces came together this day. One, there was a cardiac arrest, which you could do without. Two, there was an AED at the site. And three, there was a person that was on our Pulse Point app that was within that range to be notified. So while they then all come together in this call, we're getting closer to that point. And like I said, by continuing to promote this application throughout the community, you know, we're hoping to have more successes like this.
I have a quick question, Chief. So as far as the initial knowledge that we would have someone respond, is it because we got the call in from somebody to know that there's a distress? Or is someone with a phone standing by saying, "I'm going to press this app," and it's going to go out to those who can help? Or how's it work?
Yeah, it's actually a link that's directly built into our CAD system at our dispatch center. And when they punch in the code type for an unconscious person, as they're sending the call to the fire units to respond, it also goes out to the Pulse Point app simultaneously. It's very quick. So the public could be notified as quick as the firefighters responding to the call. But unfortunately, they got, you know, usually several miles to get to before they're there, and a person could be at Costco at the time and get notified via their smartphone that a person is having, you know, a full arrest or cardiac arrest in the store. And if you chose to help as a good Samaritan, you could.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you, other guys, for being here. Do I see a Boy Scout back there? Why don't you take a stand? What troop are you with, sir?
Troop seventeen-seventy-six.
Seventeen-seventy-six? And I won't forget that number. Thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to oral communications, and we'll open up the successor agency simultaneously to be heard also.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember, and staff. My name is Justin Pham, and I'm here tonight to ask the council for help to bring anti-bullying program to Garden Grove schools. This is a quote from L.A. Rogers' manifesto, and Santa Barbara shooter that killed seven injured thirteen recently. "A group of popular seventh-grade girls started teasing me, which hurt a lot. My experience in middle school really darkened my view of the world, and will may get darkened from then on as I suffer more and more." The question I'd like to pose to the council member and everyone here in the room tonight is, what if we had an anti-bullying program that taught these popular girls about empathy, love, and respect for their fellow student, especially students with disabilities? Could we dream of a different outcome? I'm one hundred percent convinced that we would. The program that I want to bring to Garden Grove School have already done exactly that, saved lives, drew countless testimonial from students and teacher who completed the program. I have some, I would like to share some facts from my research about bullying with the council. So as you can see, bullying is not a harmless teasing. It can lead to violence and shootings in our school, and this is a vicious cycle that we'll repeat unless we do something. Why? According to research done by National Association Secondary Principal, during this tough economic time, parents are financially stressed. They take their angers out on their kids, and the kids take it out on their classmates. At the same time, anti-bullying programs help, designed to help and address these issues, slash, in order to meet other higher priorities, is a recipe for disasters. Did you know since Sandy Hook Elementary shooting, a hundred-plus additional shooting has ever happened in school? The financial costs are staggering. Two-point-three-million-dollar loss in federal funding and administrative cost per school, according to research done by communitematters.org. Okay, so what's the solution? Fund the anti-bullying program upfront so school can use that additional to, that reclaim the two-point-three-million-loss revenue for other programs. I've reached out to local and national nonprofit, OC Human Relation here in Orange County. Challenge Day, Kid Power, Free to Love are just a few. I met against last week with Allison, Melissa, and Barbara, directors from OC Human Relation last week. We're extremely excited because we have a tangible plan that is actually achievable. So I mentioned that, you know, schools and nonprofit have limited next to zero funding anti-bullying program due to economic condition. As a matter of fact, OC Human Relation had to let go lay up two of their full-time staff due to the lack of funding. This is where I come in. From my own funding and work with the business community, I will build a web and mobile portal that will be the main driving force for our empathy, love, and respect anti-bullying grassroots campaign. The message is very simple. Parents, grandparents, you constantly see violence in school shooting on TV. Are you concerned that this might happen at your own child's school? Is it worth twenty or thirty dollars for proven preventive measure to ensure your child's safety? If you want to bring these programs to your child's school, donate twenty, thirty dollars, or even more, and get others involved. I pay forty-five dollars a week for swim lesson for my daughter. So one time twenty, thirty dollars for my child's safety is really a no-brainer. I think other parents would feel the same way. We only need twenty-thousand dollars per school, but in groups of five school, because that's how many one full-time staff from OC Human Relation can handle. As a collaborative effort, we aim to serve Orange County, but I'm here to ask the council so that we can focus in Garden Grove first, because that's where I live and where my daughter would go to school. We have less than eight weeks to the first day of school in September, so I need your help to identify five schools, preferably middle school and high school, get participation from first responder like police and fire department, and get participation from Garden Grove School District. Last but not least, help get our grassroots campaign to reach every parent that has a child that goes to Garden Grove School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I know we can make a reality.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, residents. I want to speak about a few veterans items tonight, bring you up to date on the Veterans, Orange County Veterans Cemetery Act of 2014. Latest update, this week, it cleared the Senate Veterans Affairs Committee on a six-to-nothing vote with no changes. Significant changes, therefore, if it clears the full Senate, it would not have to go back for a conference committee. So the appropriations committee will take it up next week, and it will go on through the full state senate, and hopefully, the governor will sign it by the end of September. On Friday morning, we'll meet with the city of Irvine in our continuing effort to find the right piece of land for the cemetery. The state director of Veterans Affairs will be there, as well as our committee and representatives of the county and city of Irvine. So we're hopefully getting this pushed forward, and there are several opportunities of other pieces of land that have been offered in San Juan Capistrano, as well as the county of Orange. And the Board of Supervisors, spearheaded by Janet Nguyen, has pushed the three-one-one vote by the Board of Supervisors. And Todd Spitzer told me that we will make this happen in the county of Orange, so we're really excited about that. The other item I want to mention is on Saturday at the Elks Lodge, Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez holds her annual Veterans Jobs Fair. It is well-attended. If you know any veterans interested in looking for jobs, there will be a lot of veterans organizations that provide all kinds of services and help that will be in attendance. Last year, there was over forty vendors there. So, and she will be updating the latest events going on in Washington surrounding homeland security and the Department of Defense, since she sits on both committees. And thirdly, I'd like to remind people this year, on September twenty-fourth, the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation will hold its second annual fundraising event for the museum golf tournament at the joint, at the Navy Golf Course in C.O.B. That's at fifty-six sixty Orangewood Avenue in Cypress. And last year, we raised close to fifty-thousand dollars for the museum, so hope to see all the golfers out there again this year and make it even a bigger success. And lastly, on a sad note, the mayor and I attended the services for the first president of the Vietnam War Museum Foundation, General Bailey McEwen, who recently passed away. And it was quite a moving ceremony in his honor. So if the mayor could adjourn this meeting in honor of Mr. General McEwen, so I would appreciate that as a personal note and as a member of that board. And on behalf of all veterans, hopefully, that things are moving forward. One out of every four veterans are part of the homeless population, and the Board of Supervisors in the county under some of its state funding is moving forward on two permanent veteran homeless housing projects. One in Fortune and Anaheim jointly, and one in San Ana at the corner of McFadden and Grand will be a year-round housing element for the homeless. So hopefully, we'll try to get people off the street and transitioned into society once again. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you again, and interesting what goes on here, wonderful what Adam did. It's just remarkable what goes on in the city, and it's good to be here. My name is Marge England. My husband, Tom, and I have our residence of Garden Grove, and we're here with ALMA, the Associated Local Missions and Ministries for Action. And our focus is on what the previous speaker was talking about, partly homelessness. And before we do that, I do want to thank each one of you for your service to the city. I don't think we probably tell you often enough that we do appreciate what you do in the long hours and effort you put into it. So thank you. At our meeting with Mayor Broadwater recently, a few weeks ago, Mayor Broadwater proposed that the city could compile a directory of the services now available to people without permanent housing in the city. We're pleased with that and pleased that it's being done. We have found from our research into homeless issues that a lot of people in this city are doing a lot of things. Faith-based groups, community service, civic organizations, and individuals, but nobody really knows what other people are doing. And a directory would be a great way to let people know. When it's published and/or circulated to the church offices, libraries, places where people go to ask for help, there would be a concerted way for people to be given and put in touch with the services that are available. And it will fill a need. that are available, and it will fill a need. It will also provide another tool for the police force. Chief Rainey has made sure that his officers are trained in working with homeless people and providing what assistance they can, and this would be another way they can channel people to the sources of help. Cindy Nagamatsu of Chief Rainey's staff has told us she is arranging meetings for community leaders to discuss issues of homelessness, and her way may tie in with that of, I understand it's Paul Guerrero, who we understand is putting the directory together. We also met with Councilman Phan, and we like his idea of attending some of the meetings of the Anaheim Collaborative to see what's happening in neighboring cities. We appreciate your interest and support. This will also help Garden Grove to connect with the Orange County Commission to End Homelessness, which is counting on each city to do its fair share. And I want to point out that it's helping the homeless, but it's helping every citizen of Garden Grove, because when we have people who are on the streets, it doesn't project the kind of image that we would like for our city to have. So we know that Garden Grove, we know that Garden Grove is a good place to live, and we are ready and willing to assist in any way we can to help make it an even better place for every citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the staff, and members of the council. I hope everyone had a good holiday last Friday. My own holiday got off to a real bang on Main Street, because we put together the brand-new poles for the flags, and thanks to the efforts of Councilmember Phan, we were presented with twenty brand-new flags to install on Main Street. We asked for volunteers. We had thirty people showing up to help put those flags up. Councilman Beard and Councilman Jones were also in attendance, as well as our county supervisor, Janet Nguyen. It was a great event. Everybody worked real hard. We got those flags up. I think we were done in about forty-five minutes. So it was wonderful to be able to make Main Street look better by putting up new flags. Later on that afternoon, our American Legion Post had a party for the Fourth of July. We were pleased to see, again, Councilmember Phan and Supervisor Janet Nguyen in attendance. It was a great event. We had a lot of fun. We had a lot of good hot dogs and hamburgers, and I'll try to keep a poster the next time we have another event there. And again, everyone is welcome to come to our dinners on Friday evenings, usually the first and third Fridays. In this case, the first was pretty much taken up by the holiday. That was a very interesting presentation, the last council meeting on the budget. And I noticed in the Orange County Register, the article on unfunded liabilities for pensions, and noted that Garden Grove was listed as the fourth worst for having the amount set aside to cover those expenses. I know it's important to maintain the best police and fire department that we can, and they work hard. They deserve to have a good pension, as well as the other city workers. But I want to make sure that the city is careful that we move forward in addressing the issue of these pensions, so that we don't end up like some other cities have and facing dire consequences because we didn't have the money to fund them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have no one else with a card up here, so we're gonna recess and go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. We will call the July 8th meeting of the successor agency to order, and Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Phan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council, so we'll go on to consent items, basically just the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. We have no public hearings, and we have no matters, so, or any matters from successor agency members?
No.
Okay, then we'll adjourn back to city council.
Okay, we'll reopen the city council, and we will go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 6A through 6K be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a councilmember. Move the ballots.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your public hearing is to consider zone change regarding a planned unit development on Yaki Street, and Maria Parra is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before you tonight, it's a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission to rezonate property from R1 single-family residential to planning unit development number PUD 005-2014 that will allow the construction of six single-family homes designed as a residential small subdivision on a 3,600, 900, 36,000-square-foot lot located at 13581 and 13591 Yaki Street. On May 15 of this year, the Planning Commission approved site plan number SP 006-2014, variance number V 005-2014, and tentative trap map number TT 17646, and recommended that the city council adopt a negative declaration and approve planning unit development number PUD 005-2014. The project proposes a density of 7.26 units per acre, which is within the general plan's allowable density, and has been designed in compliance with the small subdivision requirements of the municipal code. A variance is also required to allow the planning development to deviate from the minimum three-acre lot size requirement, which was approved by the Planning Commission. The proposed project is consistent with the goals of the general plan and will create additional housing units in the city that will further the goals, goals of the general plan housing element. Therefore, you are asked to introduce detached ordinance for first reading, approving planning unit development number PUD 005-2014, as recommended by the Planning Commission, that recess follows: An ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove approving a negative declaration and approving planning unit development number PUD 005-2014, changing the zoning designation from R1 single-family residential to planning unit development number PUD 005-2014. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing. I have no cards. Does anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to move approval of the PUD.
We have a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
We have to read, or did you, you read it already? Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, at this time, we will go to items for consideration, number nine.
Mr. Mayor, you have two contracts here, 9A and 9B, and I'm gonna have Elena Chain give one staff report, but you'll be taking action on each of these, but we'll have one staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Plan review activity has continued to such an extent that it remains necessary to employ two consultants for plan review activity in order to stay within acceptable turnaround timeframes. The Building Services Division staff solicited six requests for proposals and reviewed six proposals submitted to the city from plan check consulting firms. A panel consisting of three staff members from different departments rated the proposals on a basis of qualifications, work plan, and references. Based on the evaluation results, CSG Consultants and Scott Fazekas and Associates were both rated as the highest firms. Funding is provided entirely with the plan review fees paid by developers, and there's no impact to the general fund. Therefore, staff recommends that city council award a contract to both CSG Consultants and Scott Fazekas and Associates to provide plan check consulting services, both in the amount not to exceed $250,000, with an option to extend said agreement for three years, for a total performance period of four years. Authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement on behalf of the city and to make minor modifications. Authorize the city manager to enter into the extensions for three years, provided sufficient funds are available for each extension. This concludes staff's report, and Mr. Bill Tooferk, building official, is available for any questions you may have.
Are we gonna handle these individually?
Yes.
Any questions for 9A?
I just have a general question as far as, are the payments that we're asking to approve, are they on contingent of them having work to do? Or how will they be paid, and how will these amount be applicable to the vendors?
Yeah, there is no impact to the general fund. It's funded, you know, entirely with the plan check fees paid by the applicant, you know, to the city. So there is no impact.
No ticket, no loan.
On an as-needed basis. As-needed basis.
That's a pass-through cost, so applicants would pay a fee, and then we would pay presumably the fee.
That's correct.
Any more? Any other conversation?
Have we had experience working with either or both of these particular firms?
We currently, you know, we're using Scott Fazekas, you know, is one of them, and still, you know, was rated one of the top firms. And then the other firm was Willdan Engineering.
Right. Making you down pretty low compared to...
Yes, it was rated number five, you know. So CSG came number two with, and I guess, you know, they do have just more qualified personnel to do the, to do the job. And they are also local here, you know, they are in San Ana.
Were they both located?
San Ana. CSG, they are in San Ana.
That's too bad.
I have a question. Are plan checks generally on the rise?
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah, that's a good sign. Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion on 9A.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Entertain a motion on 9B.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 10.
Mr. Mayor, 10A is an ordinance for second reading, and that's ordinance number 2842, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad ver lorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a second.
Yep.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to matters from the mayor and city council members. Chris Farron.
I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. I know I did, and there seemed to be a lot of firework activity. I think it may be on the rise, the illegals, so I think we may have to step up enforcement next year, look at that. So, but overall, it was a pleasant day, it's a fun time. I commend Councilmember Phan for putting up, organizing and putting up flags on Main Street. That was worthwhile. It was a sunny, beautiful day as well, so I guess Fridays were just meant to be Fourth of July, weather-wise and fun-wise and participation, so had a great time. And with fun things coming up, we have Concerts in the Park, so I hope to see a lot of people out there on the other side of town. I think I'm looking forward most to the Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band, that's one of my favorites. So I hope to see a lot of people out there, I'm looking forward to it, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Dina.
Yes, ditto. About Fourth of July, I had a lot of fun, too. Reminding everyone, please look on the Garden Grove website for all the fun activities this summer, because we have lots of them in the city, and remember to my and Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Pham.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank you to everybody, to our entire city, to Charles, for taking all that time to actually prepare the twenty polls for the flag being hung up, and for our fellow councilmembers, Mr. Chris Beard and Steve Jones here, who, you know, volunteered. It was not a self-effort, it was a team effort. I had this idea on Monday of having new flags, and all of us chimed in just to chip in, just to make it happen, so definitely appreciate everyone's help. Also want to welcome to our city Reverend Baodang. I had the honor of hearing him deliver his service over at our Garden Grove United Methodist Church this past Sunday, and so want to welcome the Reverend to our city. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate, looking forward to this Thursday at 6:30, the first concert in the park, in East Gate Park and West Garden Grove. That's gonna be a lot of fun, and hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate that they said about General McEwen. We went to the funeral, and it's amazing what one man can do in a lifetime, and it's amazing how much you, you know a person, but you really have no clue what they have done in this lifetime. He had a fantastic group of people there, getting up to memorialize him and the things he did in his life. He was a general, he was a doctor, oh, he was everything. And he liked, he would like to be called everything. Certainly, he was the, voted in as the first president of the museum, and it was really funny, because we sort of, I think, myself and everybody else sort of voted him in because he was a general, to give a little prestige to the organization. Well, he took over like he was a sergeant. I mean, nothing was undone, everything was snap and in order, and it was fun to watch. And wherever he is today, I know he's marching to a drum. So anyway, we're gonna close in his name tonight, and Bailey. I asked him if anybody called him Bailey, what's the cartoon, Bailey?
Beetle Bailey.
Beetle Bailey. He said, "I was a general, nobody tried that on me." I told him I was a private, it wouldn't bother me at all. Anyway, our next regular meeting in the city council will be held Tuesday, August the 12th. We are gonna go dark on the second, on the second meeting in July. So write that down, August 12, 2014, should be a roaring meeting that one, so everything's been saved good. Well, we will, anyway, we will review it at that time, and we will close it this time. Thank you very much.